Okay. We can go ahead and get started. Unless you see him on waiting.
I don't see him yet, but he probably.
Recording in progress.
Hi, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Dyton Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for public broadcast on the Dyton YouTube channel and on Channel 9 cable. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I have seven o'clock. If you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I'd like to lead him to the flag. United States of America and to the Republic with its hand. One nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just as for all.
If you just remain standing for a moment of silence for former chairman of the Planning Board, Tim Ryans, who passed this week. Tim was a member of the Planning Board Chairman and participated in many other town activities and committees. Thank you. I'd like to confirm our next meeting date, which would be August 21st. That works for the other members of the board. Do we generally do a motion for that or just? No, okay, all right. First order of business is review, discuss and act Hunter Hills subdivision for the change of road name and cost to complete construction proposal. We do have a request from the applicant to continue this, so.
Reschedule it to August 21st.
So we do, do we need a motion to continue or no?
No, nothing's open. It's not a public hearing, so you can just say that.
Okay, so reschedule to the August 21st meeting.
If you want, I can read his email confirming that into record. So. Just wanted to touch base. So the reason for is Weston Sampson is in the process of providing a scope of services to review the cost to complete, but will not be ready in time for tonight's meeting. Along with that, we have the building commissioner, fire and police chief's response in the name change that said, would you like to table the matter to the next meeting? And then Lee Castenghetti stated on July 17th, 2024, that just please put both matters on to the August 21st agenda.
Thank you. The next item is review to discuss an act on the request for the extension of a special permit for Dyton Center LLC, 1901 County Street, map 17 lot 29. Is there anybody here representing Dyton Center?
Look, I thought he said he was gonna attend by Zoom, but if you'd like, I can read his letter into record.
Yeah, we just want to do that.
Sure. So, letter from Attorney Paul Salina, sorry. Salina, Peter Salino, dated June 7, 2024. Please be advised that the undersigned serves as counsel to Dyton Center LLC. On September 22nd, 2022, your planning board granted my client a special permit. They have enclosed a copy of the record permit for reference. As you are probably aware, interest rates have continued to climb and my client has been unable to secure reasonable financing alternatives to build the project. Consequently, I write to request that your board grant a one-year extension to the enclosed permit so that my client can have a fair and reasonable opportunity to pursue this project to the fullest extent. In closing, should you have any questions regarding this correspondence, please do not hesitate to contact me. Furthermore, should I need to attend the meeting or pay a fee in conjunction with the relief requested here, I'm pleased to advise. Thanking you for your kind cooperation and assistance. I remain very truly yours.
And if we vote to approve it, there's no fee involved?
No.
No, okay. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request for the extension of special permit for Dyton Center LLC, 1901 County Street. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. The next item of business is a public hearing for David Butler, trustee of the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, 833 Williams Street, map eight lots 20 and 21, special permit application. Did we already open this? So we do have, they were asking to continue it, so we would need a motion to continue?
Correct.
And they're asking for the August meeting for the continuance?
August 21st, yeah.
Some would like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for David Butler, trustee of the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, 833 Williams Street, map eight lot 20 and 21. I'll second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, did I have to open the public hearing for that?
Yes, that you do.
For the last item though, David Butler was okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Butler.
I didn't open it directly?
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should.
We should, okay. We're gonna backtrack.
Sorry, my apologies.
I'd like to open the public hearing for David Butler, trustee of the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, 833 Williams Street, map eight lots 20 and 21, special permit application. We did have the letter requesting continuance read in. The chair acknowledges any members that would have any questions. There is no one here from the Butler Family Trust to continue. Is there any public comment? No? And we have had a deliberation. Do we need to make the motion over again?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to extend David Butler trustee for the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, 833 Williams Street, lot map eight, lot 20 and lot 21.
Point of law, please. You've got to eliminate the previous vote, so that occurred before you opened this. So you need the second to be withdrawn and the motion to be withdrawn. That eliminates, then it automatically goes to you. You've opened the hearing and now this, now the motion that Mr. Woods is gonna make is in law. But Mr. Figurino needs to say, I withdraw the second of the previous motion. You can't have all these votes on record.
I.
Withdraw.
Withdraw this previous motion.
Second of the previous motion.
A second of the previous motion.
And you withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so now you can move ahead and make your motion because it's a race.
Let me make the motion all over again.
Yes.
I will make the motion for David Butler, trustee of the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, 833 Williams Street, map eight, lot 20 and lot 21.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. To continue the motion and so we're done, okay. So not making the same mistake twice. The next item is public hearing continuation for Grasshopper Energy, 893 Brooks Street, map 16 lot 28, special permit and site plan review modification. I'd like to open the public hearing. Does the proponent have a presentation they'd like to make?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dan Campbell, Love Design Group. On behalf of the applicant, the applicant and us received the comments from Weston and Sampson. Recently, we did respond on the 15th or just two days ago, there were three comments associated with the project. Only one comment caused a change to the plan itself. If you don't mind, well, the change to the plan itself was adding one line to one note in the middle of the plan. I'd be happy to display it, but it is in, it is in the middle of the plan set. It is the note that reads bottom. It's an elevation that was requested by Weston and Sampson. So under the portion that says 3,106 square feet of area to be filled with clean double wash and fresh stone to the new basin floor elevation of 75.5 or 76.5, the bottom of stone at 75.5. That bottom of stone notation itself, that is what was modified in accordance with the Weston and Sampson letter. Otherwise, what was added was commentary in letter format, the answer to those three questions. The first of which had to do with waivers, which I believe Mr. Fasendola addressed in his letter quite succinctly. The second was that bottom elevation. And the third one was basically if infiltration does not occur in the basin, is this basin substantially the same size or within conformance with the pre-development flow as previously approved? So calculations have been attached and I believe they answer the questions associated with the Weston and Sampson letter. Certainly happy to answer any questions if you have them.
For item two, where they're talking about the the recommendation that you provide this information in the plan. So you're saying that the bottom of the stone level elevation has added a call out detailing the installation of additional crushed stone, that the addition of the plan at the bottom is the requisite documentation that you were asking for?
Correct. So he was requesting that we add a elevation specifically to the plan itself, right in the middle of the plan that was submitted. It now calls out a fourth line, which is bottom of stone.
Okay, and that satisfactory in your mind to what's required?
I, I believe so because that is, I mean, it's the shortest one of the comments, but it specifically says that it's not called out, so we called it out.
Okay. And item number three, where you were asking for revised calculations regarding the infiltration outlet?
Yep.
The commentary, you were saying this is, there's no substantial change here, it's just commentary?
It's commentary. Weston and Sampson basically said, what happens if we assume that no water infiltrates? So we reran the calculations with that assumption and the basin still has a post-development flow less than the pre-development flow from the original approval. So that's the pre-development flow from the Atlantic hydrology analysis that was submitted and approved with the original documentation.
Okay. So does anybody on the board have any questions regarding the comments we just heard? No? If not, I'm gonna open it up. I'd first like to ask from the Stormwater Committee if they have any comments they'd like to make.
Nancy Goulart, Chairman, Dyton Stormwater Committee. I just have a request that I get a copy of the written response from Mr. Campbell, so I'll have it for the Stormwater Committee. We met today, but we did not discuss Brook Street solar project because of the meeting tonight. And obviously because I knew that the Planning Board would not be taking full action on this tonight, we don't have a quorum here tonight anyhow. So we'll just get a copy of Mr. Campbell's comments and wait for the next Planning Board meeting in order to discuss this. Because whatever action we take is really contingent on what you do. Thank you.
Okay. I'd also like to ask about the payment needed for the Weston Sampson proposal and whether that is current at this point?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The payment needed for the Weston Sampson proposal and whether it's now current?
It's current.
It is current as of this evening?
It's coming up.
Okay, all right.
You wanna speak?
Yep, yep, if you'd like to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ahmed Hafiz with Grasshopper Energy. I understand, I heard Ms. Goulart say there is no vote will be taken tonight because there's no quorum. Is there anything, like, can, can a vote be taken that once the recommendation comes positive from Weston and Sampson, that we can start working on site instead of having to wait till August 21st?
Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Carrie, do you?
Jeff is trying to log in.
Oh, Jeff is trying to log in. So our chairman is trying to log in and he's, just give him a chance.
Context, like this recommendation came from Weston and Sampson back in March of this year. And then we had to wait for it to be, to go through the Planning Board because there is a change of plan. But it, like, we all agreed since March that this is the only solution to the, to the basin. And we've prepared the design since then, but it's just the procedures of getting it approved through the different departments that's holding it up till now and it's been a long time.
No, understood.
So I hope you could.
I have something to say.
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead.
Lisa Calabria, I'm here as a member of the Stormwater Committee, but as everybody knows, I'm also the conservation agent. So I suggest before we make a decision on that, that we get the input from Weston and Sampson. Did they specifically say in their report they would like you to start as soon as possible?
They would like us to start as soon as possible?
No, the question is, did they specifically state in their report that they would like you to start as soon as possible?
That's not something they would, they would, they would say or suggest, like, it's not. They, they report or comment on the technical matters of the, of the design. Like, starting the work is not something we, we expect from them to, to comment on.
Okay, then, you, I was just confused as to what you just said, that Weston and Sampson had reported.
Weston and Sampson.
I believe all that, that Ahmed was saying is that Weston and Sampson was part of this solution.
Yeah.
And so they were, you know, well aware of, of the proposal with three fairly minor comments. I believe Ahmed's just hoping that a vote, if it could be taken. The vote would simply allow us, once stormwater is satisfied, to proceed so that it's on record. I, I don't think he was saying that Weston and Sampson specifically approved it. We only got a letter from them July 10th, for instance. But with three comments, again, fairly minor in nature, I, I think that from an engineering standpoint, we're pretty good. And as far as the Stormwater Committee, certainly we will be submitting the documentation. We, we wanted to attend this public hearing first, make sure of everybody's feelings about the, the commentary so that we could move forward with the, the Stormwater Committee appropriately.
I would just like to give a minute to see if we can get our chairman on board. He's trying to dial in, my understanding.
Can I address Nancy for one moment?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Lisa, before you start, I just wanted to say I stand corrected now. With Lisa present and Woody here and Dave Phillips, I have a quorum of four people on the Stormwater Committee. But again, our action is going to be contingent on what the Planning Board does. So Lisa, the report from Weston and Sampson that was dated July the 10th was attached to all of the other stuff that was attached to the Stormwater Committee agenda today. But I just want to read the last paragraph. This might answer some of your questions, okay? This is the letter from Weston and Sampson. "In addition to the foregoing items," which is what Mr. Campbell referred to and what the, the Planning Board mentioned. "In addition to the foregoing items which relate to basin one as part of the special permit modification request, the applicant has also presented some corrective actions on the submitted plan that pertain to basin three, which is a southeasterly basin on the site. The applicant has presented these latter actions as measures that are intended to bring the basin into compliance with the original approved design and that they therefore do not require modification of the permit." He's talking specifically about the smaller basin that's, as it says, in the southwest part there. He goes on to say that the corrective actions that are proposed for basin three change, consist of some regrading of the basin floor to ensure positive drainage toward the basin outlets and some changes to the basin outlet pipe ends with the basin. These adjustments have been included in the stormwater calculations that were submitted. The actions proposed at basin three, as presented in the plans and calculations, appear to meet the intent of the originally permitted design and we offer no objection." So that was the second to last paragraph of the letter from Weston and Sampson.
Thanks, Nancy. I'd like to hear what Chairman Carvalho has to say.
And Jeff?
Well, just, she might have needed five seconds ago, so.
So I think he should be brought up to date.
Right, exactly. So I don't mind, if the consultant would mind just giving another recap just for his benefit, I would appreciate it.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, the, we received comments from Weston and Sampson July 10th. There were, as you are aware, three comments associated with the modification of basin number one. The comments related to, the first comment being about waivers, which I believe was addressed previously. The second comment being that we add essentially a line to the set of plans calling out the bottom of stone elevation. We did add that call out to the middle set of plans, the middle call out in the plants. And the third comment being that we should run the calculations assuming there's no infiltration based upon activities on site. So we did run the calculations and submitted with our response to comments the calculation showing that the post-development flow, even with a zero infiltration based upon the modified design, would still be less than the pre-development flow in accordance with the stormwater regulations.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I didn't have, didn't have any concerns as what was provided. And I did see the rest of what Weston Sampson wrote back with, wrote back on that subject. And I didn't have any concerns. I don't know if the rest of the board has any concerns, but because I'm remote and driving, Dan, this is kind of yielding to you to run this meeting from that location, so.
Yeah, we are still in the public comments section right now, so are there other, anybody else who'd like to speak?
Lauren Bosley, 1680 Pine Street.
Alan Bosley, 1680 Pine.
So one of the questions is, I'm not sure if what Ms. Goulart said answers it, but if, so Weston Sampson gave their response, then Level gave their response, but how do we know Weston and Sampson is agreeing with what Level says?
We haven't heard back from them yet. So they're, they have their, Weston and Sampson has their response package already. They just, we have, don't have a response from them yet.
Right. So how can a decision be made when we're waiting on their decision is my question.
That's a good question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I guess it'll, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
Do you want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ahmed from Grasshopper Energy. And what I'd requested before you joined the, the meeting is that since we have responded to Weston and Sampson and I understand it was only submitted on Monday, what I'm asking for is if, like, can a vote be taken tonight conditional on an approval from, or acceptance of Weston and Sampson to our response? So we, we don't have to wait another month for the next meeting?
Jeff, do you have any?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Weston and Sampson might have a little bit more to say specifically about monitoring this work,
but I could be wrong.
I, I believe the applicant would be perfectly amenable to that. I mean, if Weston and Sampson's final report accepts what we've said with the condition that there's monitoring, as long as the vote was taken that we comply with Weston and Sampson's final report, I, I think that technically would, would plug the hole. It's been done on, on many occasions in many locations, including Dyton.
And through the chair, their scope of work already includes monitoring the work and site visits, so it's already included in their scope.
Are there any other public comments?
I have a question for Mr. Campbell.
Okay. Do you want to come up to us so we can hear you?
Alan Bosley, 1680 Pine. Mr. Campbell, what is the flow rate? Once that pond is full, that basin is full? What is the timeframe for it to empty with your new calculations?
Absolutely. If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if I can answer.
Certainly.
With the new calculations, it empties in approximately 38 hours.
Okay.
State standard is we have to empty within 72, so we're about half of the allowable time.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask? Who is, I know I asked this before, but I just want to find out for sure. Who is responsible to be there when they're digging this? When they're to watch that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing because, you know, we've had problems in the past? So who is responsible to be there?
I believe that was Lisa's concern. It's Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson does have the, the money in their budget for site inspection.
Okay, then who is responsible to make sure that it continues to work right? Who is that responsibility?
I would say the, well, Stormwater Committee.
Yes.
The Stormwater?
I have a question.
It would be the Stormwater Committee working with whoever is local, who is responsible for the operation of the site. Because the company itself is in Canada, so there's gonna have to be somebody named that's a local contact because if there are problems or maintenance does not occur, we have to have somebody to contact immediately so that they can either mediate, fix it, mull it, unclar, whatever has to happen. There will be onsite and provided to the town, maintenance plan for this site going forward.
And we, we still have to make sure it works before it's hooked up?
There will be testing done before the final go-ahead goes because the building commissioner said he will not issue that timing paperwork, I miss you, Carl, until it works. So there would be testing. Once it's done, I understand is that even if it doesn't rain, there will be water running to fill the basin and to do the timing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, you had a question?
Yeah, so Carrie, could you just confirm that there is monitoring in that 53G budget already?
There's no monitor, it's the review and existing design and then attending the meetings for the latest scope of services.
So if there's not, I believe the applicant would be more than amenable to adding that as part of the condition that if Weston and Sampson is reviewing as they suggested at other meetings, then they, they would re-up the 53G money prior to starting construction.
What would be a typical dollar amount if that were, if that were to be requested?
We don't know.
Weston and Sampson's knew, so I, I apologize. I, I wouldn't know. I can tell you in other towns with similar sized companies, they ask for a deposit somewhere around 7,500 to $10,000 and then refund at the end.
Question is.
I frankly wouldn't feel comfortable voting on this without having that affirmation.
The other question is the end of what? The end of the testing, the end of two years, one year, what, what is the? What is the answer to that?
Typically, it's when the construction is complete and Weston and Sampson is satisfied that the materials have been used and the basin has functioned properly, they would no longer be monitoring the site. As the Chair of the Stormwater Committee noted, there is an operation and maintenance plan approved by the Stormwater Committee, approved through the planning board process, the special permit process already, that requires ongoing maintenance, and as noted, she expects a local operator to be responsible for it in the short and long term. So as the operation and maintenance is required, that is already part of both of those permits.
Thank you. Did you start this?
About the budget for monitoring, we agree, we will agree. I can tell you now, we agree to anything that Weston and Sampson will say about site visits, witness points, we agree to any budget they put for monitoring the work.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other comments under public input? No? At this point, I'd like to close the public comments section and bring it back to questions and clarifications, or questions for the board deliberation. This is my opinion only, it sounds like there are really two points, both of which everybody agrees on, it's just a matter of timing for when it's done. One is approval by Stormwater, which they don't expect to do tonight, even though they have a quorum. I'm not asking that Stormwater take a vote this evening, unless they so choose.
No, it was, when this proposed change to the basin was brought to us, we immediately said, this has got to go to planning, we think it's a major modification. So that's what you're acting on.
Right.
So that's why we really can't authorize that going forward until the plan as revised is okay with planning.
Right. So if we were to take that vote, that the plan is okay pending, as a major modification, we would need Stormwater approval of the details with the feedback from Weston and Sampson. The second is a contingency for appropriate funding in a monitoring budget, which, again, I think we would need Weston and Sampson input on what that dollar amount should be. I personally am okay with approving the modification this evening with those two contingencies, knowing that there will be money set aside for monitoring, and knowing that this would be pending approval by a meeting of the Stormwater Committee. I don't know if anybody else has thoughts?
I agree with that.
Okay. Any comments?
I also agree with that. Subject to that, thank you.
Okay. Would any feedback?
I'm usually all voted on these.
The only other item I have is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan has not been followed so far on the site, so now that the site's going to be being worked on again, can the town be assured that the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is going to be followed and monitoring reports are going to be submitted to the town after every significant rain event, and at least weekly? Because as of now, you're not in compliance with the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. You've only sent in one set of reports over the course of, how many years has this been going on? It should be every week, after every significant storm event?
Okay, so this is part of the existing guidelines about what should be done, you're just saying they haven't to date been followed, but I think it's kind of outside the scope of the planning boards about the implementation of it.
Not outside the scope of the Stormwater Committee.
No, not the Stormwater Committee, but the planning board.
But that's under the Stormwater Committee, not planning.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that forward, so you guys have this to go.
Sure, okay. So unless anybody else has any, we're already moved on to the, if anybody, I'm sorry, what do you, did you want to say something?
I'm just not in favor of any work being done until this is all squared away and we get back from Weston and Sampson.
So for clarification?
It's subject to that.
Yeah.
And also to clarify, so remember, we're still having a public hearing, so they won't be able to do the work until, A, we get the okay from Weston and Sampson, then the decision is written up, and it's signed, and then filed with the town clerk, and then they have a 20-day appeal period. So no work can start until that 20-day appeal period has expired.
Plus the two conditions that we discussed putting on.
Right, so in the decision, when we write out the decision, those conditions will be in there.
So no work will be done until that point?
They, they won't be able to, until that appeal period.
Not one thing.
They are not supposed to.
Okay, all right. Unless there's any other board deliberation, does anybody like to make a motion to approve it, conditional on appropriate funding being supplied for 53, 53G account for monitoring, input for that to be supplied by Weston and Sampson? And I would say in conjunction with Stormwater, to, in terms of what is appropriate amount for monitoring, and secondarily, approval by the Stormwater of the comments upon review by Weston and Sampson.
Do you have to close the public hearing first?
What? Sorry, couldn't hear you, Jeff?
Can you repeat that, Jeff?
Yeah, do you have to close the public hearing first?
Oh, do we have to close the public hearing before we make that motion? Or this is part of the public hearing?
It's part of the public hearing.
Okay, all right, this is, so we're still, we can just make the motion now, if we chose to.
So if you get your motion in second, then I'll speak under discussion of the motion in second.
So move.
So motion, do I have a, is this, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, did we also want the other condition, that you get the approval of Weston and Sampson of their updated plans?
Yes, definitely, yeah, sorry, I thought that was implied. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second. So discussion, I guess it's okay to, so Nancy, you'd like to make a comment?
Would you give me a timeline on what we're talking about? So if this motion passes tonight, and it gets written up, and everything's taken care of, and there's a 20-day period, what is the date that you're actually looking at when all of the planning board action will be completed?
I can't really answer that, because it would be based on when Weston and Sampson responds to their plans, and then once that's okay, I mean, I'll draft as much of the decision as I can tomorrow, and then based upon when Weston and Sampson issues their comments and approval, and then I'll be able to plug that in, send it off the council for a quick review, and then it gets signed.
Okay.
It's kind of difficult to say the timeline without knowing when Weston and Sampson.
Right.
I know, I know they have it already, and they're looking at it, I just don't have a timeline on that.
Yeah, and, and Weston and Sampson didn't attend our meeting today, and I had requested them to come tonight, but after we discussed it, there was an issue of whether or not there were funds available to pay them for the visit to our meeting today, and this one tonight, so we said, don't come, because I don't have the answer to that question. So what I'm looking at is, if the, if your motion passes to approve this tonight, as it's currently planned with the contingency, the restrictions, the requirements that you're going to place on this.
Yep.
Then what I will do is take it to the Stormwater Committee on the 14th of August. We've moved our meeting up one week because of vacation, and I think it will just be a formality. If it's possible to have a special before that date, we'll do it, but right now, we've moved up from the 21st to the 14th of August.
Okay.
And we would, we would certainly support the same kind of restrictions, requirements that you have, and that no construction can begin until the conditions have been met. So I'm not going to call a vote of Stormwater, I haven't even called a meeting to audit, quite frankly, because I had sent out an email telling them that I didn't think anything was going to happen, so it's not fair to my other committee members that might have attended. So when I hear from Kerry that everything is in place based on what you do tonight, we'll be looking at the 14th of August, or sooner if possible, to, to take a vote, which I believe will be a formality, because we were just waiting to find out what planning was going to do.
Okay, you just heard our decision here, we already voted on that.
We haven't voted, we had the motion in a second.
We're in discussion.
Yeah, first, second, but you haven't.
We had a motion and it was seconded, now we're discussing.
Okay, all right, so, based on that, couldn't you do the same thing? That way they can actually get with it, and we get this up?
They can't get with, no, 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 no. If you mean to get with it, construction, no. We are going to wait, Kerry's going to put everything in writing, what is required, they're going to know this, they're going to know ahead of time what requirements they're going to have to meet. We talked about the, making sure there's sufficient funds on deposit, we talked about the opinion, remarks from Weston and Sampson to say, okay, we looked at what the latest comments were from Mr. Campbell, and we're all set with that. In other words, all of the things that need to be approved through Weston and Sampson, our engineers, our meaning the town, and the other conditions, as soon as I know those are met, I will either schedule a special Stormwater meeting, or if we're at the 14th, we'll do it on August the 14th. There can't be any work started before that. If that, if it, if, if we had everything in place right now tonight, and Weston and Sampson said, we're good to go, and points raised by Mrs. Caldonia, those are all taken care of, then that would be a different story, but we aren't at that stage. I feel confident that when this comes to Stormwater, after, assuming you are going to approve this tonight, it'll be a formality for us.
I was under the impression that we were the last ones on the totem pole here, and that we would make the decisions based on what you guys decide.
Okay.
That's, that's what I.
Because of the nature of the modification, if this was something that was, let's say, more minor details than developing a whole new plan on how to get this basin to drain, Stormwater would have looked at it sooner, had been in touch with planning, saying, we think this is a minor thing, but because of the nature of what was brought to us, it was like, timeout, this is not something Stormwater can actually approve, because, as you know, it's a major modification to your original plans. So it couldn't be done that way. That's why we're relying on the vote you take, and the guidance and the requirements you're putting in this decision, which is going to say to us, this is what we're saying is okay, and from a Stormwater standpoint, we would agree with that, because that's basically what our mutual engineer, engineering firm has said, okay?
My, my view, and I, this is just me, I, I see that we've gotten the answers from the engineering firm, that they are sure that this is going to work. It hasn't been tested, and I don't think it will be tested until we get some serious rainstorms in there that this thing fills up, and then we see this thing going down. But at the same time, we've been hearing this for the last five, 10 years, or whatever it's been.
Couple of years, not.
Oh, it's only been a couple of years? All right, so I'm exaggerating. And I'm sick and tired of hearing about this, and we're not getting to the end of it, we just got an engineering firm that's telling us.
Well, not ours, though.
Huh?
It wasn't our engineering.
It wasn't ours, so now we wait for them, and that's what we're waiting. Based on that, if our engineering firm says it's okay to go, then I'm okay to go, let them do their thing, and follow, follow that.
And what I'm, and what I'm saying to you is, we are in agreement, if that engineering information comes in prior to the 14th of August, which is our next regular monthly meeting.
Okay.
I'm prepared to call a special meeting of Stormwater to vote only.
On that.
On this particular issue, so that it can't go going. But as has been said here by several people tonight, until that happens, they can't start construction to do anything else.
Okay.
But they will, because I've had this discussion also with Mr. Hafez, if it's ready to go and Mother Nature doesn't cooperate, they're planning to bring water in, am I correct? And they will pump enough water into it, and do the timing to see how fast it drains, to see if it's working in actuality and in concept. But again, the reason I'm hesitant to move ahead tonight is simply because I sent the notice to my committee that I didn't expect anything to happen, there's at least two members that could have been here, and I know Mr. Ferry had planned to be here, if we didn't get horrendous weather, that would affect his department operation. So, as I say, when I get the word from Mrs. Easterday, because she will have heard from Weston and Sampson, and I'm sure we'll get copies of what they say, and she says it's good to go, if it's before the 14th of August, I will schedule a special meeting. If not, it'll be the 14th. If not, we're going to be moving later, but we'll get something scheduled to get it done.
Okay.
All right?
I, I just want everybody to understand, I've been on the other side of this, I know what it's like to have a bowl of money involved in this and not be able to move. I don't know anything about what they have to go through, or anything like that, I'm not voting in their favor, I'm just voting on everyone's view, everyone's, we should all try to work with one another, that's my whole entire issue.
What do you want from us?
I don't want anything from you. I don't want anything from.
Does the wind, the noise, we can't even sit my arm with you. What do you want from us?
Does it help you?
What do you want us to work together on?
Okay, does it help you to see them there every six months, working? Or would you like to see that thing running over?
You shouldn't put it down in the first place.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think we just need to, we need to step back to our agenda here.
Okay, fine, I'll take the blank, if that's what you want, all right, I don't care.
So, I, we have a motion?
I'm going to give you my take on this.
Okay.
Real quick.
If I may, if I may, just so everyone understands, every board committee commission in this town who has been involved with this project since day one, has worked to get it to fruition. We have a history in this town with solar farms, and as you can see, they're moving along, we got them generating power, we got them doing all this. This one had particular construction problems practically from day one, so it's required more time, and more oversight, and everything else. But as far as cooperation throughout this town, everyone has done their best, and that's how I see this thing wrapping up.
I'd like to hear Mr. Woods' comments, and then we can take a vote.
You know, those retention basins has been a problem from day one. The first time they were tested, they failed. They fixed them, they failed, they fixed them again, they failed. So you can't expect us to jump through hoops and just approve everything until we actually know it's going to work, all right? Because they were all failures before. You know, and I feel for the people over here, the boys and ladies, they're, they're nice people, they have a beautiful home, and they've endured a lot of stuff, you know? And it's coming next, to the next guy. You know, it's going to come to my neighborhood someday too, you know, and we're going to have to go through it, but I do understand 100% how you feel, but I don't think we should approve anything until we know that's working, working correctly. It's never worked once, yet so far, for whatever reason, I'm not an engineer, right? Hi, Amish. Well, even at Hannah.
I think we're just going to hear Mr. Woods, and then we're going to go to a vote on a motion.
So I'm all set, but I am not going to be 100% totally happy until it works correctly.
Okay, so.
That's all I have.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify on your comment, though, they have, they need an approval in order to reconstruct, and then see if it's, if it's working.
Well, they might approve.
So if you don't do any vote, or you don't approve it, then they can't do anything.
I'm not saying not to vote.
Okay, well, you just, I'm just.
I'm just saying me, you know I'm not going to.
No, 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 I'm just clarifying, you said you wanted to see it work first, and they can't do that, because they need this approval in order to do that.
Nancy, we're just going to go to our vote here, so.
I just want to assure everyone, the building commission has stated repeatedly, he is the last person who has to sign off. If, if we all do our work, and for some reason it doesn't drain properly, and we're, they're not going to go online and generate, so there are safeguards.
Okay, so, hold on. So hold on, Joe, I'm just going to, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those in favor, say aye.
Can we do a roll call?
All those aye.
Jeff?
Jeff Carlo.
Aye.
Woody?
Obstein.
Hey, Dan Higgins, aye. All right, so the motion passes? And I need a motion to close the public hearing?
All right.
Okay, so I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. The next item on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes for June 5th. I believe Jeff had some comments on that, but those have been updated.
Revisions have been made, so, yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve those revised minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion?
Second?
Second? I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye, Jeff, all aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any correspondence?
No.
Kerry? No? Any public, general public input? No? No?
Nope.
Going on the board? I have a motion to, make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Second.
So move.
So move, have a second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I have meeting adjourned at 7:50.
Good night, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good night, Jeff.